All right. The, I guess the first item of business that tonight is the looking at the comprehensive plan amendment, CA 2020-0202. And we will have a presentation by Dave Vazana regarding the solar farm component and data center layout on portion of the Marshall planning area. Map and information are, have been submitted by the applicant. And so I guess we hadn't heard from Mr. Vazana yet. Is he here?
This is Alfredo. No, sir. He has not joined the meeting yet.
Okay. I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
C Davis. Is this a proposed amendment to the draft that, that we created last year?
I would say that these are possible replacements.
No, this is Connie Marshner. No problem.
Because if, if we haven't actually, I don't know how we could have an amendment number assigned if we, if the document has never been made real by being approved by us or forwarded to the, you know, what I'm saying is doesn't this represent community input rather than an actual amendment?
I'm not exactly sure what, what happens. I assume that when something is brought into this office, that it is given a number at that time.
Right. I'm not sure it should be given a number. Now, if it's an amendment to the, the very old.
I think I could probably answer. This is Chris.
Yeah.
And the application was submitted by Mr. Vazana and he has logged in. So he is here for his portion of the briefing.
Right. But what I'm, I'm wondering how we could amend something that doesn't really exist. I think this is more like a great opportunity to write it better in the first place.
This is, this is Vice Chairman Al McFadden. So I understand what you're saying, C N. And if everyone doesn't understand, so she's saying, is this an amendment to the existing plan or is this input? Which is this being considered? Cause we haven't finalized the revision. And I see where she's coming from and I totally agree with her on that point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you hear me? This is Daryl.
Yes.
Dr. Davis, what has occurred? We created the Marshall planning area number 15. And at the time we created that, when it was annexed in, in 2014, we showed the area on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan as just recently annexed. As you know, we've been working on the comprehensive plan update of the entire comprehensive plan for the last four and a half years or so, five years. And just recently, Mr. Vazana submitted an application to amend the comprehensive plan for section 15. At our last meeting work session, that amendment was presented and there were some questions regarding the changes that Mr. Vazana had, had wanted made, which was specifically to the solar component or solar farm component and the data center component. And tonight's presentation will be to hopefully answer some of those questions. And then we need to decide which way we want to go forward with this amendment.
Right. I understand that, but I really hesitate to call this an amendment because an amendment, a proposed amendment carries with it a certain defined timeline in the town code. And I do not believe this is appropriately called an amendment. I am very interested and anxious to get things moving along as the applicant has.
It is in fact an amendment. He has filed for a comprehensive plan amendment. So in that instance, this is in fact a, an amendment to the parcel 15, cause it's currently only shown in our comprehensive plan as recently annexed. He wishes to change that designation or amend the comprehensive map to the documents we have before us tonight.
Okay. So it would actually.
Does that make any sense?
It would actually represent an amendment to the comprehensive plan in its amended form as it is. And then when we create our chapters, we would include that if the amendment passed.
That is absolutely correct.
And meanwhile, my question to the applicant is, do you want to amend this really patchwork old document or do you want to really make the wording on the new one better and go from there?
Dr. Davis, I suggest we let him give his presentation and then if the presentation doesn't clear up the question, then, then we ask that at the end of this presentation.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, let's go ahead with the presentation. I understand that Mr. Vazana is here now, so we'll open the floor to your, your plans about possible use of this property.
Certainly. Thank you very much Chairman Jones and members of the planning commission. I appreciate the opportunity to, to circle back and follow up on our discussions of this amendment from several weeks ago. I apologize, I've not, not gotten a complete solar submission in yet. I did include the, sort of the bulk of that with, with the preliminary development site plan on the solar and the reasoning, the rationale behind not submitting that entire application at this point. Well, there's, there's several reasons for that, but, but primarily, you know, when I, when I first submitted this in February, we, we had just lost Jeremy and my thinking was we really needed, I've discussed this strategy with Jeremy for several years. And so I wanted to get, start with just the comprehensive plan to have an opportunity to sit down and discuss these issues with the commission. Obviously, things have changed significantly since February and I appreciate you guys bearing with me on this as my thinking has also continued to evolve in light of our present circumstances. And so at this juncture, my, my thinking is that, that we, you know, as opposed to doing each of these things individually and doing, you know, separate public hearings month after month, that it makes a lot more sense. Once we ever get to the point, if the commission's comfortable with a public hearing several months from now, et cetera, that it makes more sense to do them together with any additional applications that, that I plan on submitting as opposed to, as opposed to all of us, you know, doing public, you know, several public hearings in multiple months. My, I don't think that that would make sense at this point. And, you know, and of course we'll see how things play out here in the next, in the next, you know, as we move forward in the next couple of months. So tonight I really wanted to take the opportunity to kind of take a step back and, and talk about the, the big picture, the different concepts and projects that FNR LP is planning at this point and to have, have more of a general conversation with the commission about, about those ideas and those concepts. And also to, to take the opportunity to talk about, to circle back on, you know, the traffic issues were, were mentioned last time and I wanted a chance to circle back on that as well as to give the commission sort of a, you know, a site overview with some site characteristics and a brief, a brief discussion on that. And I guess I will, I'll, I'll start with, with sort of the, the mixed use future residential aspect and portion of the project in light of the last several months. And I, the outlook at best is cloudy. I would, on the residential front, I would say actually it's opaque at this point. There is little to no visibility. We're in a fairly, very scary time from an economic point of view. It takes several years for, for the, you know, the so-called fallout and the impacts on the economy to, to be, for us to become aware of them. And at this point, none of us really have any idea on the length or severity of what's going on right now. Clearly with, with everything shut down, the economy is in kind of a free fall. Several sectors, energy, retail, real estate industries could end up, they're facing significant problems that could reverberate throughout the economy and, and end up impacting the banking system as well, which is, is very important to housing as is whether or not people are secure in their jobs. And, and at this point, there are a lot of uncertainties facing the residential aspect. That being said, I don't, I don't view these new concepts in the comprehensive plan or potentially forthcoming with future applications. I don't view them as, as particularly undermining the, the residential aspect of the project. The, the residential aspect of the project is very much driven by, by the transportation section. And we're going to start with this first attachment, attachment number one on the transportation. And the, and I say that the residential is very much dependent on the transportation in the sense that, you know, there are only so many units that you can put up in this land area. It's not, it's not necessarily a, a measure of the size of the residential aspect of the project as much as it is the traffic generated by that residential aspect. You know, once you start to hit the thousand, 1,200 units, you're getting into probably closer to a four lane east-west connector. And, and once you, once you get over that point, I mean, the difference between a two lane and four lane could be close to $20 million. And so in the past, when we've looked at doing rezoning on a larger piece, you know, a lot of those unit counts are driven by, how can I get the units underneath the requirement for, for the four lane east-west connector road? It's a similar situation with the active adult and the traffic generated by that. But, you know, once you, once you start getting into the, the four lanes with the east-west connector, then, you know, in that, you're, you're suddenly into a conversation about, about a $20 million flyover in order to, to access the land bay. And so you could be talking about an extra 100 or 200 units, but it, it makes the project not economically viable. Once you, once you reach that tipping point. Now, a small sort of side note on the quote unquote tipping point from going from a two lane to a four lane road and whether, you know, a lot of this transportation stuff is, is really as what I've learned through the years, the last 10 years with the various transportation, traffic studies that we've done, I would really say it's, it's more of an art than a science, or at least it's as much of an art as a science. I think you could put 30 very smart, very good engineers in a room and tell them, we want to build a thousand units. And half of them would probably say, you only need two lanes. And half of them would say, you absolutely have to have four lanes. And so it's a matter of, a lot of these things are a matter of opinion, even amongst the experts and the transportation engineers. The old school guys like to build as much infrastructure typically in my experience I've found, as they can. And ultimately, looking at it from the town's perspective, of course, you guys, the town will look at it and say, hey, you know, we'd much prefer to have the applicant that build this four lanes here, even if it's maybe not necessarily needed because, you know, then 20 years from now, we won't, we won't necessarily have to go in and build that, those extra two lanes. I'm coming at it from the point of view of, you know, we wanted to create more of a community neighborhood feel in the development and, and the capacity of the roadway is not necessarily driven by the number of lanes as it is driven by the number of ingress and egress points, the number of, of turn offs and turn lanes as far as the ultimate capacity of that roadway. And so the, the, so I wanted, that's my initial overview on sort of the residential outlook, but also how it ties into the transportation. So as discussed last time, the number one issue facing the project, it, are these transportation issues? And that's sort of coming from any type of future development that we decide to look at here. So I really like this map. I apologize. It's, it's, gosh, it's circa from back in 2012. And so some of those dates, you know, improved Happy Creek Road. We know that we've gotten only phase one at this point and phase two's not been completed. The future, at least from Parkway, that's our improvement that has been completed. It shows the alignment there for the flyover, flyover. And I believe initially, the initial, at least local media reports on Leachron Parkway were certainly touting the benefits of opening up, opening up the Happy Creek Technology Park and getting access to this northern, northern land bay, which of course, I think that became cost prohibitive when, when they really dug into that. And so we've got the Leachron Parkway now that goes to Happy Creek Road. And then of course, the proposed future east-west connector. And as I said, this, this map goes back to about 2012. I think we used it as an exhibit in the, the annexation. And so we were trying to show, show a future east-west connect, connection there, joining up back into town from, from Shenandoah Shores Road and Happy Creek Technology Park. And so the, the map is also beneficial in that the shaded blue areas, they show the 1976 annexation, the shaded sort of pink reddish, the Happy Creek Park that that was annexed in 1978, as well as the R1A piece. And then we see the Marshall Planning District, which of course was annexed in 2014. Alfredo, can we do the, the next slide? The next, can we go back Alfredo, actually? I was going to run through the, the slides in attachment number one. There we go. Thank you. So the, the FNR LP, the property has potentially three access points. This, this would be the westernmost access point into the property. It's, you can see Manassas Avenue extended there. That's actually a dedicated public street up, up until, up until it hits Happy Creek there, I believe. And, and the property has a, a 50 foot access easement through the town farm that runs from the end of Manassas Avenue Extended, pretty much sort of directly north, but northeast slightly from Manassas Avenue Extended. In the future, I think it, it might make sense to, to look at potentially different locations for, for the, the final location of, of an access roadway back there. But, but at this point, our, that, our easement runs essentially from the end of Manassas Avenue Extended, approximately north to the FNR LP property boundary. It's probably would not be an ideal primary type of entrance for, for residential community. It is a good way back into town, but we are, we're going through the, the town farm there and the wastewater treatment facilities. And then, then of course you can, you can see the town solar facility there as well. Can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? Our second potential entrance. This is undetermined at this juncture, whether or not the, the capacity of this as a, as a potential future access point. I've always believed that at the very least, it should be retained to be used in some sort of emergency capacity. I'm also very much aware that the Mary Shady Lane folks back there would love to permanently keep, keep this access point. I'm certainly not against that. Can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? So this, this slide, this issue came up with the Mary Shady Lane folks and the, and the railroad. And I, I just had some of our guys a couple of months ago, take a look at, at what type of improvements could be done here to, to simply improve the safety, safety of this crossing. The railroad had expressed some potential willingness to, to work with us in, in accomplishing something to this effect. I think when you get a chance to work with the railroad, we need to try to work with them. I don't know if that is going to work out at this point, but the railroad is, is historically very difficult to work with, very difficult to get these crossing agreements with the railroad. And, and so we do not have a crossing agreement here with the railroad, but of course they, they could not shut it down if they wanted to. As there's probably 150 homes back there, there's about approximately 50 or 60 that are year-round residences. A lot of, a lot of them are, are half-year residents, residences and, and spend the summer months here. If we could help facilitate some safety improvements, at least here, I think we would like to do that moving forward if possible. So I, that's the reasoning for why I threw this particular exhibit in there. Can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? So we've got, I think we've got two slides here, but we've got the Leachron Parkway and Happy Creek Road. Can we do the next slide? And then we've got Shenandoah Shores and, and Happy Creek Road. They are, they are very close together. You can, unfortunately you can't see, there we go. Thank you Alfredo, read my mind. The, the two intersections are close together. You can see they've, they've added a northbound left turn lane going, going eastbound on Happy Creek Road as a part of, I believe the, the Leachron Parkway improvements. So they have added some capacity to that, to that intersection, which actually was very important and it's a good safety. You know, when, when trains are at the tracks, you, you really would like to have that extra lane so that people that are making that left turn going northbound on Shenandoah Shores Road, so that you don't have people swarming around them while, while those folks are waiting for the train to pass and that through traffic now has an extra lane. So that, that was a, a good safety and, and capacity improvement. And unfortunately, we've got this last little section of, you know, phase two of Happy Creek Road, which will run, which will run up to Leachron Parkway and, and Shenandoah Shores Road ultimately. Perfect. Next slide, please Alfredo. And so I'm going to pretty much wrap up the transportation here. The, I just threw these in. These are just different, I had asked the transportation engineers, through the years we've looked at, looked at various scenarios here. I think we've discussed the, the concept of the, of a potential roundabout. I don't know if it's a personal thing or what. I'm, I'm a big fan of the roundabouts. They're extremely efficient and they are also good at traffic calming and slowing people down, making people pay attention. I know that, that when they first go in, in areas where people, drivers are unfamiliar with them, it takes a little while to, to get used to the traffic circle. I, I remember when they put the traffic circle in up north of 66 at the Riverton Commons and, and you would see, you know, it'd be my grandmother or something or, that had never done a traffic circle that had a tough time at first, but I think that once you get used to them, they are very, very safe and very efficient. And so these last three I just threw in, they are various connections and they also show, you know, show where that, the alignment of the proposed future flyover of, of Happy Creek Road and how that might tie into, to, to our, our residential entrance way and also into Shenandoah Shores Road there, going up to, going up to Happy Creek Technology Are there any questions on this attachment, on this first sort of transportation stuff where we could wait until the end? I just, once now, this is my, sort of the transportation section.
Did the planning commission members do not have copies of these slides that you've just now been showing us, correct?
It was my hope that, that you would get a copy of those, Ms. Marshner.
I don't think we did. We got a bunch of other attachments, but not, not the ones you just showed us. Did anybody else get more than I got?
This is C Davis. I do not have a copy of, I think it was slide five, or sorry, slide four, which I thought was really helpful and useful.
Yeah. I had only the first one and it was in a slightly different form.
I can certainly send, send more copies of, of everything that if people did not, if you didn't go through properly or I didn't save. or I didn't save the file properly.
I, I think we have them. They're, it's called Agenda Item Two. Attachment number one, Transportation and Access, Marfa Planning District.
That's the, that's the first one that we saw.
There are additional slides. Can you scroll down on that document?
Gotcha, gotcha. I did not scroll down. My bad. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Those were parts of the, that package handout that Connie sent.
Okay, I only had it digitally. Okay. Got it. Thank you. Withdraw the question. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and for me, because I have some, some visual limitations, I got, I asked Connie to print stuff out for me and I think we just inadvertently didn't have that other slide.
Okay, can we go ahead with the second, second part of this presentation, Mr. Vazano?
Yes, sir. The, the second part, I wanted to talk briefly, just the existing, the attachment number three, Alfredo? No, let's, let's do number three. There we go. Thank you. Just briefly, the, the site. There are development issues in Front Royal. There are, there are slopes and carst terrain. And sinkholes, we touched on last time. That's part of the carst terrain. So I included some, these first three that, that Mr. Duggan had done for, for us several years ago with the existing topography. And you can see sort of in the northwestern portion of the site. And then, I mean, I'm sorry, northeastern portion, there are extremely steep slopes over there. And then as you, when you get to the western, you know, third or fourth of the site, it starts to really slope down toward, toward the, toward the river there. Can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? This one shows just, just the slope. As I, as I was discussing, the steep slopes as you get closer to the river and, and steep slopes up in the northeastern portion of the site that, that should not be, will not be developed. And what we have, what we've really focused on through the years with most of our planning efforts has, has been predominantly where we should develop and the areas that we should, should not develop and, and should save. You can see here, the northern portion of the site is probably the flattest. That is up by the power lines where, where we've got the, the concept of the solar farm site. And, and those guys were really looking for, you know, four to six percent slopes, four to eight percent slopes. They're looking for relatively flat, flat land. Can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? So this one's my favorite one, the hydrology of the site. You can, starting, starting to the east, there, there are, it's essentially, you could almost track Mary Shady's Lane along that watershed line that is going, where the drainage is going down to the east versus where the drainage starts, everything starts draining to the west toward the center of the site. Center of the site that would really be a low point where the water is, you can see the, the line running from north to south. That's the drainage for the majority of the site. And then when you get into the western, the western third of the site, it starts draining more directly toward the river and, and down toward Happy Creek area, which ultimately is the same, is the same drainage as, as the arrow that's, that's pointing south. That's, that's going down into Leachron and into, into Happy Creek. The, if you look at this aquifer recharge area, this has been a constant in all of the planning that we have done. This, this you could consider. The carst terrain, and there are sinkholes and lots of places on this site. But the, the carst terrain, what you really need to be concerned about and worry about, or one of the features, is that the water is not being cleaned enough before it's getting down to the water table. And so this aquifer recharge area is really, I wouldn't say it's a big sinkhole, but it's, it's an area where there, the, the ground is depressed. There are trees there. But we, we were asked by DEQ and the engineers that know far more things than I do about this stuff to, to try to preserve this area. And, and we've, we have, every site plan we've ever done has, has always preserved, not touched that area because the, the water is ultimately getting down to the groundwater level too quickly. And so you want to ensure that you drain your water away from that area and you want to ensure that, that it remains undeveloped so as not to, not to disturb the, the groundwater and the, the creatures that, that probably live down there. Can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? These are, I, I really actually just discovered on Google that you could do this 3D thing so that you could, and it's, it's a really cool tool and it can show you different angles of the site. I don't, I don't know if it turned out as well in the presentation as, as on their site. But so I wanted to, so this is looking to the north and you can sort of see the drainage area running, running south to north. If you follow the second road in the town island farm up to the property line, there we go. Perfect. That, that's really the main drainage area I was talking about where everything from Mary Shady's Lane is, to the west, is really draining, draining down into that area. And, and everything to the north and a lot of what's even to the west of that drainage area is draining down into, into that drainage area. And, and then as I mentioned, Mary Shady's Lane is, it's actually, it's really close to following the high point here on, on that eastern edge of the site. And, and the high point would be where the, you know, the water is, is draining to the west. If it falls to the west and if it's also the east, it's really, it's draining down to the east. And so can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? So here, we're looking south. We've got the town, the beautiful mountains. And Mary Shady's Lane is running, running up this side, side of the site. So we're just south of 66, probably about over the river, right about here. And you can see the power lines running, running over 66 and then taking a left and running to the east there. And next slide, please Alfredo? Here we've got the view looking to the east. There's Depot Avenue would be the very bottom and the train, the train junction there. And if you look about in the middle of the slide, there's, there's a, it's going east to west now, but it's really at the north-south. This is a power, no, no, go, go east to west. Yes. Perfect. That, that's the power line going into town and it goes to the Manassas Avenue. I believe Manassas Avenue Substation. We're, what we're doing is preserving, preserving everything to the west of that power line. I don't know if it would be a good future park area or, you know, conservation area. I've looked at sort of forestry agriculture and could we grow, grow something in the forest there? But the, the slopes get steeper in there and it goes, the, the water's going down in the river and that, that area is important to keeping, keeping all the water and, and that's flowing in the river clean and, and the drainage as it exists today, essentially. Can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? This, I wanted to do one just with the, sort of the solar area. So right in the middle there, that's the Marshall Family Cemetery. And then we've got, got Mary Shady's Lane going across there. And, and that, those two fields on each side of the power lines and going back are the, are the, the solar, the solar area that, that's been, that we hope to propose. Any questions on this sort of overview here before we move to the other main, last presentation?
Hi, this is C. Davis. So basically on this view, I am a little confused about which of these roads is Mary Shady Lane. Could you point it back one more time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then your proposed solar farm area is, it looks like it's pretty well delineated visually here.
Yes, yes.
You're going around it right now, right?
Is the solar farm the dark green or the lighter green?
It's, it's both, but it's to the north. It's, Alfredo's got it where the, is.
Okay, and that's currently woods in there, is it not?
Back, back up there, it, it is, it's predominantly cedars. There is a hardwood stand. Unfortunately, it's, when you get back toward that power line we were just talking about that runs into town, there is a stand of, of ash trees actually. And as of 12 months ago, I believe the Emerald Ash Borer has unfortunately settled in back there. So I, I don't, I don't know how much longer the hardwoods that we have actually back there in the proposed solar area. I, I think that they are not going to survive no matter what we do. And I, I have not seen them, my, it was about a year ago. Jeremy Baldwin had let me know of that. But we'd kind of been expecting that for a while, that it showed up in Winchester three or four, five years ago. It's been in the Shenandoah National Park for a while. And it's destroying any ash trees it can find.
Okay. So this is basically the area that is sort of like, almost like a natural square there from Mary Shady Lane to the top of the screen. There's another road of some kind that goes along the left. And then it's basically that whole big square area.
Yes.
But not where the Marshall Family Cemetery is?
No.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And, and this is C. Davis, one more time. A question for you. What, what will be visible from which roads? For example, 52266 for the solar farm?
Okay, so the, the solar farm. And this is, this is actually great. We, we visited this last time and this was in my mind when I was, when I was doing this. But if you, the, the farm road that runs to the barn, so just, just off the middle of this slide on the left-hand side, that farm road intersects with Mary, intersects with Mary Shady Lane.
Right.
And that's actually a high point of Mary Shady Lane. And that is the point that I was referring to in our last work session on this where you really get, get a view. If Mary Shady Lane stays in its present location, that's, that corner of the road, you, it looks out over this, this field here. Now, once that road turns and it, and it enters the slide right here, where, where it starts on the slide, Mary Shady Lane starts to, starts to go down. And so the, the elevation of Mary Shady Lane goes, goes down relatively substantively all the way to those power lines. And so with an appropriate buffer there, you wouldn't be able to see the solar from Mary Shady Lane on this stretch of Mary Shady Lane. But you would see it right before you enter this picture on Mary Shady Lane. There's a high point right there where it intersects with the, the farm road. And you would get a view out over, over this field. As far as from 66, 66 actually goes down, loses altitude significantly next to this site as it prepares to cross the river. And so you have no views of the site from 66. No view to this portion of the site really from 66. Now, if you put a huge water tower or something, maybe in the north, in the northwestern corner of this site, you could see that from 66. But you, you would not see the solar. It's, it's significantly elevated above the grade of 66 where, where 66 passes this portion of the site.
Dee Jones here. This is a view that you're showing. It seems to me that it is sort of an artificial flattening of the land. I think that's probably a part, you know, a, a aspect of it that you couldn't change. But it looks awfully flat here, but it isn't really that flat. Wouldn't you say that's true?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And I, I'd encourage you to, to play around with the Google Maps, the 3D version. Because actually, if you look at Marshall, the cemetery here, because these pictures are distorted because of, because of the angles and the distancing. And so if you look at the Marshall Family Cemetery here, I mean, it's a huge hill in, in the, between us and the Marshall Cemetery. And so that, from this particular angle, you know, it's, it's, it's tough to tell that that's even sloped very much. And, right.
Okay.
There we go.
So any, any more, any additional material for this, this portion then?
That's it.
Okay. So we got transportation and topography?
Yes, sir.
Outlook and next steps, right?
Yes. Alfredo, the- Alfredo, the regular, the, uh, normal presentation part, there we go. There we go. Um, and we do the next slide, Alfredo? And I, I'm going to go quickly through these guys because, uh, we've covered a lot of it and we can, of course, circle back, but, um, we've covered the three different access, potential access points, um, and the importance of the, the transportation network. Uh, next slide, please Alfredo? Uh, the existing street functional classification. Uh, I, I pulled this from, um, one of the draft plans of the town and it, this just shows the, uh, shows the transportation network, network here. Um, next slide, please Alfredo? And so, uh, as we touched on last time and sort of, uh, you know, I know we're doing bigger picture, but just for comprehensive plan, uh, issue, the, the two concepts, um, we were adding to the draft were the potential solar farm and the business, uh, potential data center campus. Uh, next slide, please Alfredo? Now, all of these, uh, these projects are similar in, uh, in the strategy or in the approach from an entitlement point of view. I had discussed with, uh, with Mr. Camp, uh, for several years, the, uh, you know, the best approach on the solar, uh, you know, we had discussed putting in an actual solar ordinance into, I had actually initially proposed, uh, making it a byright use i- in agriculture and, and submitted a draft, uh, solar ordinance. And we ended up, um, where I, Jeremy ended up convincing me to come around to, um, to the approach of, uh, of doing, uh, the, the, uh, Chapter 175 text amendment with a special use, um, permit application. Um, last thing I would note on that is just that there is an entire, uh, application and, um, and, and vetting process that goes on after the, uh, after the local, uh, entitlement, so to speak. So in order to apply, in order to even apply to the, to, to Virginia DEQ, to do a solar farm, you, you need to first, um, get approvals, uh, locally. And, uh, and they have an extensive list of, of things that, uh, that are required for that application. And they also will, would have a public hearing on, uh, on any applications they receive for the solar. But they are, they are the ones ultimately in charge of, 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 uh, of sort of final approval, so to speak. And, and then we would come back to the town with a, with a final site plan. Uh, the business campus is, uh, a similar type of approach, uh, making sure that, uh, that the, uh, data center concept would be in, in the MCD district, uh, making sure that the district would, uh, would work for, um, for what the future development, uh, would entail. And in, in addition to the text amendment, would include a rezoning application. Uh, and, and I, I view the sort of data center concept as e- even once it's zoned, you're, you, you know, you're able to have much, much more productive conversations with potential end users. Uh, however, it could be just as important to them to, to ensure that, uh, these are very competitive projects. Uh, I would probably, uh, lean a little bit on, on the, uh, on Doug Parsons over at the EDA and, and, uh, and, and with help, uh, as far as whether it's a technology zone or an enterprise zone, uh, et cetera. And so I would see a rezoning in there as being more of a, is a first step, um, and, and council would, would need to consider, uh, if they were willing to do sort of any, any incentives, uh, on that front. The residential mixed use, um, would also require a 175 text amendment. Uh, we've actually, we actually submitted, uh, submitted a text amendment on 175 for PNDG, uh, several years ago. Um, it was, uh, some of the thinking at that time was to wait until, uh, until we submitted a, a full rezoning application, um, in order to move forward with that. And then of course there, I, I mentioned briefly last time, but there's 148, uh, special exception permits potentially with that. Um, and, uh, potential tax districts as well with that as far as, uh, infrastructure financing, uh, et cetera. And, um, uh, next slide, please Alfredo? So the, the first concept that, uh, we touched on last time and, and, uh, I don't want to get too in-depth, uh, in detail here because, um, I, I'd like to get you guys an application and, and, uh, have an opportunity to, to present that application to you and we can get into more, uh, detail on some of these things. Um, I, I put this map in. It's a, it's a good, uh, good site overview type of map. It shows our, um, shows the power lines, it, you know, the Dominion Power Plant up there, Waste Water Treatment Plant. Uh, and, and honestly, my engineers, when they did this map, um, they were really excited about the data center ideas. Uh, and we were doing this for the, the solar concept actually. Um, and, uh, and, and we did reach out and, and, uh, solicit a little bit of feedback, uh, back in 2018, uh, about, um, about both the solar and, and the data center, uh, concepts. And, um, and we've been, uh, thinking about those, uh, since then. It's, it's hard for those discussions to progress too far when, without knowing, uh, sort of the, that it's zoned properly and, and what the requirements would be to, you know, to, uh, to get the site up, up and, uh, and running. Um, the, uh, solar draft, uh, development plan, uh, that I submitted or, or that hopefully you guys received is, um, approximately 182 acres on the fenced-in area. Uh, about 24 of those acres are underneath the power lines. Um, and the, the solar stuff has been evolving so much these last several years, uh, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we could put at least some solar panels underneath the power lines. But, uh, up until this point, I've, I've always assumed that we would probably not be able to do that. Um, and, uh, and if that, if that is the case, the, uh, at least, at least our first draft of what you guys have now, uh, w- would be approximately 150 acres of the, uh, the actual solar panels. Um, next slide, please Alfredo? This is the, uh, uh, draft layout for, uh, for a data center campus. I wanted to, um, just get this in front of, in front of the commission, uh, let you guys, uh, take a look at it, um, and see if you had any initial feedback, uh, cause, um, I would certainly incorporate, uh, incorporate that into, into our thinking. But, uh, this is, is certainly a concept that we are seriously looking at and considering at this point, you know, and what, what has really made me think that, uh, that it might be that, that it could be a, um, you know, not a total loss, so to speak, if, if it's, if the lightning strike does not occur, uh, so to speak. You, you know, I, I don't have much interest in rezoning this large parcel, uh, i- if, um, if we, if we have to start all over with, with doing anything else. And, and the attractive part about the mixed campus district, uh, really is that the text amendment that, uh, that we, you know, that we would, uh, that the MCD would allow us to, uh, to do a active adult community, uh, on this piece if we were not able to, uh, to attract a data center. And of course, that would require, um, you know, uh, additional conditions and different conditions, uh, than the data center. Um, but by having it, i- if it were zoned MCD, we would, we would then at least have the option of, um, of, of making this portion of the site residential. And, um, pretty much just about all the plans that we've ever done, uh, have had, you know, pretty much all of this western portion of the site as, uh, contemplated a- as sort of future, um, active adult type of, uh, opportunity. Uh, can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? And this, uh, I wanted the engineers to just to do some site calculations here and, uh, before we, um, for, for, for us to, to, uh, to share, to share with the commission. And the, uh, a- as you can see, the western woods and open space, uh, is about 138 acres. Uh, I would add that there's actually a, another western piece that goes down to the railroad tracks. That's, uh, about 12 and a half acres. Um, and it's not included in this site plan. So that western woods and open space would be, uh, about 150 acres, uh, for this plan. The solar farm site, uh, is about 106 acres. That includes the, the 24 acres underneath power lines. Uh, the actual footprint of the data center campus is at the 153 acres. And, uh, the property that, uh, that would not be subject to the solar, the data center, uh, of the, the A1 or annexed property, uh, is about, would be, the balance would be 207 acres and R1A property is about, uh, 150 acres. Um, can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? Um, so I, I've got many, many different, uh, layouts from through the years. Uh, this one is good. It shows, um, because it shows also the steep slopes. It shows some karst terrain in area. Uh, so you can, the northern area, you can see, uh, the, the shading there is karst and it's, you can tell the soils are very weathered. Um, we do have an issue with some of our soils, uh, that will add significantly to the development costs. That area, uh, where the proposed solar is actually a, a problem soil area. Um, and essentially what, i- if you were putting housing foundations there, you'd be liming the soil. Um, I've seen estimates of, uh, $10,000 per home for the additional development costs as far as, um, to, to address the, the soil issues. Um, this, this was also a good layout because it shows just the community one. So it, it shows roughly, uh, the future area of just the residential. Um, I don't particularly love this layout. The, the, the road in the south going east to west is just, is way too straight and I don't, I don't, I, I'm not a big fan of it, but, uh, I wanted to just show, uh, share with the commission, um, what, what sort of this, this community one, uh, would look like here combined with, uh, that's the, the top half, uh, of the, the R1A. And I believe the R1A there showing maybe about 150 units on the R1A piece. Um, there's about 350 to 400 units, uh, on the community one. But these are, those are single families. Uh, I think, um, there'll certainly be a, a, a much larger mix. Uh, this particular plan also shows a potential school site. Uh, it's undecided whether or not a school site would be included in a future application or not. It's just, as I said, a draft plan that, uh, is several years old, but it gives a, it gives a, uh, it gives a picture of, of the area that we're talking about here on, um, once we get hopefully some more clarity on the economic picture, uh, et cetera, that we can, uh, start making some more progress with, uh, the residential mixed use portion, uh, of the project, which is the portion I'm, I've always been most excited about and, and still very excited about. It's just, it's certainly the most complicated, uh, portion of the project, um, all the way around from engineering to, uh, to transportation, um, to, uh, to the political environment, um, you know, of, of residential projects, et cetera. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, can we do the next slide, please Alfredo? So the most important thing here is the sort of general aspect of, uh, general aspect of the plan and that, um, that it's, uh, you know, nothing is really, um, nothing is really set in stone here. Um, you know, it, it's also when you look at, uh, when you're looking at these building permits, um, you know, any, any home builder I talk to, any bank that's going to finance this project, um, you know, one of the first things they're going to look at i- is the market and they're going to look at the new home market and what the permits are. And, um, you know, and, and it's, it, it is, uh, it's, i- i- it's an important thing to the banks as far as underwriting, underwriting the projects. Um, this, you know, if you look at 2010 to 2015, it, it really, you know, in the last, the last, uh, recession, the great recession that we had was, was much different in that, you know, housing was the main problem that caused this, th- this great recession. And, but I, it really took four or five years before, um, before sort of the foreclosure inventory and the, uh, you know, the existing, uh, inventory was, was absorbed enough to, uh, to make any sort of new projects, uh, pencil in, so to speak, uh, make them viable. Um, uh, last slide, please Alfredo? Um, I'm sure I forgot lots. I'm very happy and to, uh, discuss any aspects of this and of course answer any questions, uh, that anybody has.
This is a wonderful presentation. This is C Davis. I really learned a lot from this and I can't tell you how, how much I appreciate the work you put into the visuals because it'll be useful to us for other things too. Um, so a couple of questions. Harkening back to our draft from last year, uh, this chapter of the comprehensive plan. One of the concerns we had was potential, uh, tax revenue from whatever projects may come into this dis- we had was potential uh tax revenue from whatever projects may come into this district. Um can staff comment on what the implications of these proposed plans would be for that?
This is Chairman.
Go ahead Darrell.
Th- this is Darrell. Um Dr. Davis, uh the uh solar farm, uh there's a debate on whether or not uh how much tax income you can get from a solar farm. Uh obviously uh a solar farm uh doesn't generate much need as far as transportation, uh schools, uh stuff like that, fire fire and police protection. Uh as far as the data centers, uh now you're talking uh something very interesting in that um you know, we have a hundred counties or whatever in Virginia and there's probably a hundred counties trying to get data centers in their locality. Uh they are a high uh sought after addition to a community because of the uh uh not much burden that they put on infrastructure, except for water and sewer. They do have a high demand for that, but as far as police um and schools, they do not, but they apparently contain a lot of taxable uh machinery and goods. So um as far as the exact numbers, that's something we'll have to come up with uh if if you request that up for the next meeting.
I would love to have that information, so I'd like to request that information for us to help us in our consideration.
Okay, I will put that on the list.
And I'd like to be able to think of it.
Oop, did we lose her?
I'm still here.
Okay.
That's great. Yeah, I'd like to have that to sort of think and digest and look at things a little bit. I I like the I you know, I hope that it's okay to put solar panels under the power lines because you really can't put much of anything else under there, uh certainly not livestock or people, um or you shouldn't anyway. Um so that would be a very good use of that area. Is that actually feasible based on the current technology?
I I hope to find that out, Dr. Davis. Most of these solar fields are are typically e- eight to fourteen feet high. Now, this stuff has changed significantly in the last ten years and um I mean, I was just reading in the Northern Virginia Daily about uh the the solar facility, I guess, in Mount Jackson and they were talking about panels that were three three to four feet off the ground. Um and so, you know, it could be an issue where uh I need approval from the power company in order to do that. Um there is a limit on uh quote unquote structures being constructed in the right of way. You know, how that's interpreted, uh I'm not able to answer that definitively one way or or the other. Uh this I I can say there's a restriction. I think it's five feet. So the restriction on structures in the right of way and a restriction on the height. Um but you know, if you look at the schools etc., I mean, they put these things on roofs everywhere and so um I think it's it's more a matter of finding the right uh solar developer who has panels that are appropriate for, you know, for that area and you know, if that's twenty percent of my solar site area, I'm certainly going to be uh in a better position uh doing doing a project uh with with someone that has that capability.
Right, and then there's the technical aspect because you're in quite a radiate uh quite a quite a radiation field there and I don't know what the implications would be for the 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 electronics of the solar panels either, you know, so that's beyond my ken. I'd be very interested to learn more about that and to know if there are precedents for this electric company for use of 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 that, you know, sort of spot. Um the second question I have is what are the environmental risks of installing and running the solar panels? Um and in conjunction with that, when you say problem soil, could you please be more descriptive about what that means?
The problem soil comes into play more when you're constructing a home and you know, all the home builders will do a ten-year warranty on a home and they so they want to make sure a year, two, three years down the road that the soil is not compacting more, that the foundation is solid and it's not gonna crack. And so the soil issues are they they're addressed uh more when you're putting in foundations and that's that's liming the soil, getting the pH balance correct in the soil so that so that it's not gonna shrink or swell uh and it's not gonna therefore cause problems to your foundation in the future. Um the solar uh they're they're putting a hole in the ground and um if it's a trouble spot, I could see them y- you know, using some concrete in there. We use concrete on, you know, fence posts, um you know, when when you have a problem one that it won't won't stay in. Uh and and all of that uh would be required to be removed uh at the conclusion of um of the term of the of the solar. Um so there's there's very minimal environmental impacts. You know, I have read about and and I'd have to look it up for you, but some sort of chemical that they put in some of these solar panels and issues have been raised about whether or not, you know, if one of them cracked or something that it that this chemical could get into the ground. Uh I've seen a lot of solar developers in response to that that concern uh essentially putting it into their special use permit that that they won't use solar panels with this particular and it's a long fancy word that I I can't remember right now, but with this particular chemical compound i- in it. Um and so those are my uh initial thoughts on the environmental uh
Yeah, some of the earlier models, and I think they've probably overcome this, there was a lot of copper, lead, mercury there. And you know, with the waters, with the water is gonna just go flying away right into the river pretty much, you know. And so it's good to know and and I think that information's available and I don't I I think, you know, they're using this a lot in wetland areas in in Florida, so they've probably overcome quite a bit of this, but it's worth asking at this point.
Absolutely, and and I agree with you. We we uh we don't need panels with mercury and any it it should not pose an environmental risk and and there should be assurances uh that um you know, that that the site is okay and remediated and potentially like maybe you go out and and you test it and make sure, but I mean, the preference is not to, you know, not to put panels with uh with that potentially have had issues as far as, you know, any sort of contamination in the environment.
Sure, and and actually, if you have areas that were there's been a lot of erosion building houses on those areas, radon's a very big deal. So actually, solar panels would be as more safe probably, you know.
Right.
Um and then on your final set of slides, maybe I missed it, um but are we in this version three, is that where all of the wording is that you're referring to when you talk about when you have those three columns for comprehensive plan amendments?
Dr. Davis, this is Darrell. Let me respond to that uh if you don't mind. Um first, I would like to get back to your initial question when we first started the meeting tonight was the timeliness of this um uh application. And from what I'm saying, Dave, uh you can correct me on this, um it looks like you want to table this comprehensive plan amendment to add uh at least three uh text amendments to the zoning ordinance to complement the the comprehensive plan. Uh um am I correct on that?
At least two text amendments Darrell. Yes, sir.
Okay, so uh in in order to answer uh Dr. Davis' initial question, we would have to either table this current request for amendment uh until a future date uh when when we had written these uh text amendments to to go along with that. Is that is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, absolutely. We we hold off until I I can get these additional applications.
Okay, good. All right, um Dr. Davis, now, uh under Article Three, uh Mr. Chairman, if you'll let me move to that, um
Okay, go ahead.
Three versions. Hello?
I said, go ahead.
Okay, the uh three versions that we have under Article Three, uh Dr. Davis, version one was the one we had in our original um notebook, if you will, when we were discussing uh with Mr. Camp as director, the uh um uh the the original work on on Marshall Area Fifteen. As you know, when it came into existence, we labeled that whole six hundred and four acres as um recently annexed was a description uh with our version one, we were gonna call that area um just mixed use, which we had also called uh or used that same designation on the hospital property, EPTAD and Royal Phoenix uh at Avtechs. Those uh latter three uh locations I mentioned, uh they were all subsequently rezoned to either the mixed campus or the PND zone. So we had originally uh wanted to uh take Area Fifteen and call it just mixed use. Um and then Mr. Vazana made this application of which he highlighted, if you will look Alfredo, version two. That contains uh yellow highlighted uh items from the applicant that he wanted added to our version one to be part of his comprehensive plan amendment. Version three, as you see in your package, that is a compilation uh of the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission uh looking at this Marshall Area Fifteen and rewriting it to what they felt was appropriate, just some minor changes uh in there. But if Mr. Vazana is gonna table this uh application, uh these three items are kind of null at this point. Um and I would hope that we could have more information on on what Dave was talking about regarding the text amendments and the next step for this uh comprehensive plan amendment at our meeting on the twentieth. Plus, we we've got a whole lot of information tonight that we really need to digest so we can ask more questions.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Merchant. That was great.
Okay, well, I I think with that, we uh appreciate um the presentation by Mr. Vazana and um uh as I say, it's a lot of new material and there's a lot of options that will be affected a lot by economics, which we're not talking about. Uh we don't know the economics of one of those versus the other. So if there unless there are the critical issues, I'd like to open the floor for discussion of the rezoning application, uh F R E E Z O N two thousand and thirteen uh dash twenty twenty. And I believe they'll have the staff report. I'm not sure which which staff person's gonna report on that.
Mr. Chairman, this is Darrell again. Just to back up one step, um I would like to direct staff then to go ahead and work with Mr. Vazana and prepare, start preparing the uh uh text amendments to the zoning ordinance that he would need to accomplish uh his comprehensive plan amendment and to try to have that ready by the twentieth. If not, we'll do it at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Okay.
And now for the item four, uh this was included in your packet tonight. Alfredo, if you'll go to the um zoning map for the EDA. Uh this is submitted tonight as part of the uh um of our agenda, just merely as a heads up as to what's coming. Uh the EDA uh is looking to rezone uh two tracks they own uh in the Happy Creek um area. Uh Shandor Shores' property is adjacent uh to Mr. Vazana's and uh they are seeking to zone two parcels that were originally zoned I two. Uh they were changed to R one and now the EDA is seeking to return them to the I two zoning. Again, this is really not for discussion tonight, just a heads up that uh of what's coming down the road so that when we start considering what we're gonna be doing on the FRLP uh at Marshall Area Fifteen, we can also be looking uh how this will impact this proposed rezoning here also. If you have questions or uh anything on that, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but we will be preparing a full packet uh probably for the next meeting. If not, it'll be the first meeting in June that this will be available. We've sent it out for departmental uh reviews and as soon as we get those reviews, we'll finish the packet. Okay?
Um just a one quick question. The Progress Drive uh those areas, uh lots, uh those are all commercial, are they not? There's no no private homes on that.
They're actually all industrial, the industrial farm, so that is correct.
Yeah, so that means to me a very logical reason to do that, to approve that rezoning.
So what is the story going on here? I mean, hadn't we uh made some changes there a while ago when this was going to be at the Police Academy or something?
Oh, that is true.
This is Chris. But this is Chris. Actually, the EDA is trying to improve their rating. Uh I think they're I think it's called a SEER rating. Uh I don't know if that's the proper word, uh but it's a overall rating throughout the state that when they compete for uh businesses, corporations, so forth, to come into localities, um this would help their overall rating to make Front Royal a little bit more marketable uh to attract companies to come into Front Royal.
So they're they're trying to get it rezoned how?
By submitting the application, just to go through the process, the rezoning process to take it back to the I two uh zoning.
Uh Connie, this is Darrell.
So we're undoing the Police Academy zoning? Okay, yes Darrell.
Yeah, the the Police Academy did not obviously uh come through vision. Um and I believe originally we had rezoned this to R one as a component for the uh remember the Human Life International uh building that's out there on Shandor Shores Road?
Yes.
Uh at the time when they built that, they had envisioned a campus-type uh arrangement there and they were looking to have a residential component with the business uh campus for the Family Life International.
I remember that, yes.
So so now that has basically evaporated also and they wanna uh the the EDA wishes to rezone this property for its obviously for its best and highest use. Uh Commissioner Jones, Chairman Jones, um the the properties on Progress Drive are in fact uh industrial. However, remember that uh FRLP to the west, uh that is currently zoned R one A, so we are adjacent to a residential zone uh to the west.
Right, right. Okay.
Um I have a question. This is C. Davis. Just so that I don't confuse myself in the future, can Just so that I don't confuse myself in the future, can, can staff clarify the difference between this request and the forbidden point reasoning that was asked for at, at a preceding meeting in a residential area?
I'm sorry, what was that again? You broke up.
So this is a per permissible request as opposed to the request for rezoning that was received for for residence?
You're referring to the spot zone that was in the residential, uh, converted commercial in in the middle of, correct? So this is already surrounded by industrial area, uh, it is next to an R one A, but it's also uh connected to uh industrial area, so it would be permissible.
Uh, Dr. Davis, I'd be happy to include that information in the packet when we uh start our deliberations on this, if you wish.
Sure, well, I was thinking, you know, if I were in the public and I and I was privy to both of those discussions, I would be interested in the difference. Thank you.
Absolutely, and and of course, as we discussed with the House of Hope, sometimes it's not so much what you're adjacent to, but the uh intent and use of what you're trying to rezone, so we can certainly, you know, look at that and see and make sure that we're consistent in our application.
That's, that's what I'm concerned about, yeah, thank you.
I believe we are at the uh category five, other discussion or updates. Anybody have other discussion or updates?
I just have a a county marshal here, I just have a a personal, point of personal privilege, I guess it would be called, but I come by the office sometime in the next several days and pick up print copies of all of this.
Yes, you can, anytime. Just give us a call and we can meet at the side door and hand off whatever you would need.
Okay, what hour, what hours are you there?
Uh, eight to five.
Eight to five, okay.
Every day. We're, we haven't, we haven't left the office. We have been here ever since the shutdown.
We've been quarantined here.
You never go home, we understand.
And and I really appreciate these printouts because I put stickies on them and make notes. It's just great.
Yeah, I I I didn't see mine until today, and I I looked at them some on the screen before, but it's, when you hold it in your hand, it's a lot better.
I think we're dating ourselves, folks.
It's okay.
This is a learning process, too, you know, we're trying to see what works and what doesn't. You know, we're, we're here to to make, you know, your life easier, so uh, it's, it sounds like to me that uh continuing with the paper package in addition to the digital is probably the best way to do it, so.
I think you're right. Yes, totally agree.
I don't wanna jump the gun, but it's uh about eight uh, eight forty, uh, can we have a move, move, a motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
No, moved.
All in favor, um, just, just sign by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Or just log off.
We, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for all your participation.
Thank you.
See y'all.